Hi Jake.
Oh, hello, how are you?
I am fine, how are you?
Just watching the storm brew here behind Joe's head.
Is it, is it significant?
It's looking like it's gonna be. I sort of looks like Williamstown North is maybe some really foreboding clouds that way.
At least it's a storm brewing behind my head rather than in my head.
I don't know, Joe.
Things that we can be thankful for.
I don't know.
No, no, no. I've, I think Jake's probably laughing. I've been a little bit like punchy today, but not in a bad way. I probably just had too much caffeine.
Hi Patrick.
Hello, how you doing?
You've been punchy in a way, Joe, that I wish I were writing down some of your words of wisdom in your phrase.
Oh, I don't know if that's a compliment or a...
It's absolutely a compliment.
But it was a good day. It was really warm and, and it was like a very productive, beautiful day outside. The grass is starting to green up. Oh, that's good.
My mower's busted, so it's got me a little nervous.
Oh no.
I pulled it out the other day. It's got a flat tire.
Just get some goats. Hi Ursula.
Hello.
Hi Julia.
Hi there.
You know what I noticed Christina? I was trying to change my Zoom name the other day and is that usually you can do that in your little dot, dot, dot at the top. Is that something I can't do because we're recording? I wonder?
Um, I don't know.
Do they move it?
It's something that you can't do, I believe, because our account is, it's one of the precautions that you have in place to avoid Zoom bombing related issues. So it's a security.
So I need to do that in a different Zoom prior to another meeting and then I'll be, okay. Well, in the meantime, I'll just be Ursula and Mike and there you go. That was from the softball meeting.
You could definitely be worse Ursula. You can let Mike know that too.
Hi Carrie, hi Jose.
Christina, you look like you're in a spaceship.
I do? That's cool.
Yeah, it is cool. Like a module or something.
It's my fancy, my fancy racing chair here.
Yeah.
Super comfy, but kind of silly looking. Waiting for Curtis and Steve. There's Curtis. He likes to slide in right on time. Hi Curtis.
Hello.
I'm guessing that's six.
Hi Christina, it's Steve.
Hi Steve, how are you?
Good.
The team's all here. Jake, are we waiting for anyone else on your end?
Just Nolan, but...
I see him.
Oh, okay.
I'm right here Jake.
There is apologies Nolan. Sorry. I think we're, I think we're set Christina.
Great. Okay, I'd like to call the Mount Greilock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is April 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom due to a law signed by Governor Baker. The meeting will be broadcast unwilling at TV channel 1302 in Williamstown and posted to the Mount Greilock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours after the meeting. I'm going to call the role Julia Bowen.
Here.
Jose Constantine.
Here.
Curtis Elfinbine.
Here.
Carrie Green. Ursula Malloy.
Here.
Steve Miller.
Here.
And Christina Conry is here. At Mount Greilock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next on our agenda is public comment. No one has signed up ahead of time for public comment, but if there's anyone in the public who's here who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Not seeing any hands, so we will, oh. Coach Paris, if you could unmute yourself, let us know what town you are representing and what agenda item you're speaking to. You have three minutes.
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at the agenda, but um, my name's Rick Paris, Lanesboro. I live in the town of Lanesboro. And I was asked to, to get on here from John Benzinger. I don't know if he gotten anything on the agenda in regards to
Yes.
Naming of the baseball field.
Yes.
After Coach Messina. Okay, well, I just would like to just say a little bit about Coach Messina. I mean, he's a great guy. He's been a community member and a baseball coach up there at Greilock for 29 years counting the pandemic year. He's impacted a lot of lives, my kids' lives, a lot of other grown men at this point that are have gone on to do great things and uh, he's dedicated his 29 years to baseball and obviously we know he doesn't, you don't do it for the money for 29 years. Getting paid a little amount of money you get paid to be a coach. He did it for the love of the game, the love of the kids. And just impacting their lives. And he had a special way about himself and how he did that and, and to this day, these kids still come back to, to find him, to say hi to him. They actually have a alumni game that they try to do once a year also. And so what we would like to do as now as being the coach and, and seeing everything and seeing him retire, we would like to, to represent him and dedicate the field in his honor and his name and call it the Messina Field. And that's what we're looking to do.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. That's it for me, I guess. I don't know if John's on here or not.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, moving on, um, student representative update. I know we could not have a student here tonight because of their busy schedules, but I think Jake should, the principal of Mount Greilock Regional School is going to speak on their behalf.
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Molly did want to be here, but she was, she was busy. She did prepare some notes. So I am delighted to read her notes for you all tonight. So this is her update. With, with this great warm weather, spring sports have started. We have launched a new unified track and field team, which has been an awesome experience for all involved. They had their first meet on Wednesday with Wakona. Seniors are slowly but surely announcing their post-high school plans, which has been really inspiring. Juniors and seniors had a dedicated directed study performance on Wednesday by PMP Playwright Mentoring Project, which was a unique experience for everyone involved. Course selection is wrapping up for next year and quarter four has started off smoothly. Student Council has officially wrapped up its book drive and is looking towards putting on elections for next year's officers and representatives. We are still collecting data about school start time and look forward to sharing that once it has an accurate and sharing that once it is as accurate as possible. Our school's youth environmental squad is working to recreate the garden behind the school and register, educate, vote, rev. Just ran its annual voter registration drive in time for the May and June town elections. And that wraps up Molly's update. Thank you for listening.
Thanks Jake, thanks Molly. Okay, next up, approval of minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the March 10th, 2022 minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Julia seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Sorry, Constantine, I have no fight unmuted there. Sorry.
Open by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Milla, I.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. And I would like to make a motion to approve the April 1st, 2022 minutes. Ursula seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbine, I.
Green, I.
I.
Milla, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. I would like to make a motion to approve the April 7th, 2022 minutes. Ursula seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Bowen, I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Open by an eye.
Green, I.
Oh boy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay. Moving right along, we have our next up on the agenda is a principal update and we'll be hearing from Principal Nolan Pratt of Lanesboro Elementary.
Hello, everyone. Do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes. Let me know if that works.
I got it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Quick thumbs up if you can see that. Awesome. Thank you. So let's dive right in. We have a lot happening since the last time we have all seen each other. In January, we had our winter concert or with a limited capacity crowd, students in the orchestra, band and chorus demonstrated their skills as they played several pieces. My personal favorites was the Queen medley that they played where everyone started stomping their feet and clapping their hands. It was great. It was a great time. Through the Lanesboro Initiative for Excellence Grant, the Berkshire Music School has brought two items to us. They brought an assembly for students in grades three through six, which was all about jazz and how it started in America. They also brought together a puppet workshop, which is after school on Thursdays for our students in grades K through two, and that's an eight week program that ends with a performance. Through Williams College Winter Study and the Williams College Center for Learning and Action, our grade three students participated, participated in BioWise and you'll see that in the picture in the top left. And what that is, is that's the life cycle of a zebra fish that students learn about. They also learn about genes and hereditary in that, in that time. Through the, a grant from the Mass Cultural Council, Mass Autobahn has been working with our students in grades one and three to teach about seasonal weather equals ecosystems and adaptations. So animals can live in different environments and the MCAS, we're right in the middle of MCAS. Every educator knows that the MCAS happens in the spring. Shout out for the students who have been absolutely working their hardest, crushing everything that they do and giving it everything they have for that assessment. We've also had a lot of, we've had three Zoom around the world performances. The, we've had one on Zoom, we've had two, one on Zoom about Kazakhstan, one in person about Morocco, which is what you see on the right there. We had a bunch of students sit in and learn about Morocco and the presenter brought in different artifacts from Morocco. And tomorrow, our students are going to learn about Panama. On the left was something that was happening today that was just awesome. It was a big bad wolf competition. Students in grades kindergarten and three teamed up to build the strongest houses they could with gum drops, toothpicks, straws on a paper plate. And then they watched as the, to see if the structure could withstand the big bad wolf, which was a hair dryer. Several were successful, some not so much. It was just awesome to see the creativeness of our students. A lot of other things are happening at Lanesboro. Our book club is wrapping up its first book this Monday. We have read The Only Black Girls in Town. Thank you to Melissa Carnes and Erin Jennings for running this group and Sheila Parks at the Lanesboro Town Library for helping us get copies of the books so we can all read together. The Mount Greilock Multicultural Student Union has been running activities after school once a month for our students in grades four through six. And you'll see that photo in the bottom center and it's just a great time for students to learn about more than what's here in Lanesboro. And the Lanesboro Elementary School Recycling Association, which is a group of third, fourth and fifth grade students have begun collecting cans and bottles out of each classroom to make sure they get into the right recycling bin. Some things that happen at our school that are part of our school, but are also part of the greater community are, we had a Gaga pit installed by a local Eagle Scout Vince Welch. He used the Lanesboro Initiative for Life Grant to build the Gaga pit with his troop, troop eight. They installed it last Friday and the students are already loving it. And also on the right, you'll see the grade five girl scout group. They put together COVID kits slash flu kits for their bronze award project. And those are kits that can go home and students when they need to collect work and be out for a couple of days. I always like to brag about our wyverns of the week because we have so many good people in our building doing so many good things. Here's a collection of wyverns of the week over the past couple of months. And our upcoming events, trivia night, the PTO is hosting a trivia night to raise money and that is on April 28th from 6 to 8 PM at the Brook House. Our spring concert, this is a cool event. We are combining with Hancock Elementary School to do a combined spring concert. And that is on May 25th. Summer Fest is on June 3rd and our field day will be the afternoon of June 10th. And that is my spiel. What questions do you have for me?
I have to ask what a Gaga pit is.
Gaga, it is a game that is sweeping the nation. It is an octagon, but not the, not the violent kind of octagon, the fun kind of octagon. It's dodgeball below the knee. And you can't catch or throw the ball. You can only like hit it with an open hand or a fist and you just try to hit, you can only hit it once. You hit the ball twice, it uh, you're not allowed to do that. So you're out. So it is, if you YouTube it, you'll find a lot of great Gaga videos. Ursula, I see your hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to note that I've heard a lot about this Gaga pit and that everybody in the school was lined up to use it and everybody wanted to turn. So I want to see it because it sounds great. And I also can't wait to hear more about the trivia at the Brook House because that also sounds really fun for parents. So looking forward to that.
We, there might be babysitting available at the, at the Lanesboro Elementary as well.
Better.
And the host, the host is someone you probably know pretty well as well. So it's gonna be a good, good event.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you all and have a fantastic evening.
Thank you so much Nolan. Okay, up next we have a summer programming discussion and I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Priester, who is our Director of Special Education Services.
Good evening everyone. Um, want to if I share my screen?
You should be all set. Let me know.
All right, how is that? Can everybody see that? All right, so I'm here to talk about summer programming for the summer. Our extended year services programs we're going to run in our elementary schools in Williamstown and Lanesboro. We plan to run them from July 11th through August 11th on a Monday through Wednesday schedule, operating from 9:45 to 1:45. Related service programming. We're planning to operate that for four weeks from July 11th through August 3rd, Monday through Wednesday, 9:45 to 1:45 sessions. And that could vary depending on interest from our students. Our Mount Greilock tutoring program, we're planning to run for five weeks, July 11th through August 11th on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule. And again, depending on on interest, we may bring that down to Monday, Wednesday. And Camp Russell, we're planning to send our students again to Camp Russell this summer. It's always a big hit among our students that go there. And we're planning to do that from July 5th through August 5th. Some of the staff that will have to plan on hiring this summer, a summer coordinator to run the program among all three schools. Nurses in each of our buildings, two speech therapists to be split up between Williamstown, Lanesboro Elementary and Hungry Lock High School. Two occupational therapists, again divided up between Lanesboro Elementary, Lanesboro Elementary and Hungry Lock High School. And one physical therapist, that'll be a regional split. One physical therapist, that'll be a regional split among the three schools. As far as elementary staffing for our programs, we're planning to hire four teachers in each school and four classroom paras. And additional paras depending on the needs of our students and who decides to attend, that could vary to some degree. And we may offer some life skills programming in Lansbury Elementary, depending on the interests of our students there to attend Camp Russell. Or to get more academic skills. And that Mount Graylock Regional School, the Principal Schutz is planning to offer. History programming, American in the World, which is a US history course, English courses at all levels. Plato, Plato courses, those courses can vary depending on the needs of the student. Five-week in-person program at Mount Graylock, the session's running from eight to ten, and a second session from ten to twelve. Hustling will be offered from Lansbury and Williamstown Elementary. Oh, sorry, Williamstown Elementary Communities. Recovery and remediation-based, not advancement, participants need approval from their guidance counselor enroll. Students who require attendance to advance in grades will be invited by counselors via letters sent home to families. And I'm sure those discussions will be happening shortly before the end of the year, and they'll be reaching out to the families that qualify for that. And that's pretty much, I'm like a stomach shiver. Okay, anyone else have any questions about summer? Yes, Ursula.
This might be a question for Carrie or Joe, but I'm just curious with all the staffing for the summer, is that accounted for already, I assume in our budget plans, there's a, there's a summer, okay, I figured.
Yep, yes.
Yes, Carrie.
Patrick, thanks for this, I'm wondering how does this differ from what we offered last year, not, not the other piece, which was, you know. New for last year, but this isn't, and this is something that we've done for many years, I'm just wondering if it's similar to what we've done. For many years, or if it's different in any significant way.
It's pretty similar, one, the one change we made this summer is we went from a. Typical Monday, Thursday schedule down to a Monday to Wednesday schedule, but we increased an hour of each day, so. We're actually going to be getting more hourly time, just it's going to be less days, we figured. After the past couple of years, people might enjoy some long weekends this summer, or longer weekends.
And. I'll just, sorry, Patrick, I'll jump in a little bit on that answer. At the, at the middle in high school, Jake and Colin reached out to the faculty. Maybe a week after our last meeting, just to check in with. You know, where, where they felt they were in the school year relative to school years past. About sixty percent said that they were, they were where they normally should be, or actually ahead, a few, a few that, you know, together, that was about sixty percent. And the other forty percent or so reported that they're. They're in the ballpark of where they, where they would normally be, it's, it's sort of the normal give and take of what a school year brings. So, and as we've been tracking that throughout the year. We, we did, we did not have state money available to run as comprehensive and as big of a summer school as we had last year, we simply didn't qualify. That money was more limited this year and was much more aimed at. You know, urban districts and districts who have a much, a much higher. Level of economic need in individual households and, and as a district than we do. And so we, we really felt this was the summer after a school year that has looked and felt very much like a, a regular school year, at least here for the last. Month or month and a half, we, we felt it was appropriate, the budget for and kind of return to. Summer school as usual as well, so just to flesh out that answer.
Thanks, Jake, and my other question is whether we're confident that we can staff this from within our district staff.
Yeah, for the most part.
Nope, go ahead.
Yeah, for the most part, we may have to post externally for a few positions, but for the most part, we believe we'll be able to staff it now.
But I'll also add that we have been incredibly fortunate that our teachers have been dedicated throughout the pandemic with, with these summer programs in ways that. You, you read very different stories from other parts of the country, we've been, we've been really supported by them with, with extra effort, extra hours, so it's been great.
Any other questions for Patrick? Okay, thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the Finance Subcommittee Report, so I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Green, who's the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Thanks, Ursula, I'm going to waive my time and move on to the next, next item.
Okay.
I wanted to face because that was Christina, not Ursula, but we forgive you.
The next item on the agenda is the Policy Subcommittee Report, normally I would turn this over to Jose, who is the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee. But I believe we're moving these items to our next regular session, Jake, do you want to speak a little more to that?
Yeah, just very briefly, we, we had some new policies that came to us from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Last week, our, the, the law firm that we use, the Dupre Law Firm. Sent out a memo related to a couple of those policies based on. Some, some Federal Office of Civil Rights audits they have been involved in over the course of this year. And so we, we simply opted to pull these off for now, so that, so that we can take. Some of the Dupre Law Firm way in back to the Policy Subcommittee. My read of what the Dupre sent us, much more comprehensive, much more detailed. And inclusive of some things that I think we want to be inclusive of. And so, so we simply, after a conversation with Jose, simply pulled these off so we can get them. Just where we want them before we bring them back to the full committee, for a, for a first and second read. So apologies for that, and thank you for giving us the time to get this right.
Thank you. Okay.
This is Steve, can I make a quick comment?
Steve?
Yes, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So I, I just want to say thank you for, you know, the time you're doing and, you know, pulling them to just really look at them, to give us, not just the school committee a first and a second read. But also the community a chance to really look at them and make sure that these policies are going to do what we want them to do, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so moving right along, next up, we have the Business Administrative Report, so I'm going to turn it over to our Business Administrator, Joe Bergeron.
Thank you very much, the first subitem is Mount Graylock Regional School Field and Track Project Next Steps. What I'd like to recommend tonight is that. We use an opportunity to put out a request for services for an OPM for the entire duration of the project. Coming up, coming up ahead. An owner's project manager within this context, given the scale of the project, given the timeline that we're looking at in terms of trying to get a designer on board. In the spring, summer, to do work in the fall, so that we can, we can get things out in the winter. At the right time for a contractor, and then having that contractor start next spring and work through the spring and summer within that site. Right back behind the building that Jake and I are in right now. It just makes all the sense in the world for us to, to navigate this that way and have an OPM. Really taking us through all of those steps for, for all of our sakes. And so a process that we could use for that is for the school committee to authorize. Superintendent, the Business Administrator and the Finance Subcommittee, I think, to. Get a request for services out for an owner's project manager for this project. And to receive the responses and make a selection, I think that's an efficient thing that we can do with the committee of three. If the committee is willing, the Subcommittee, as well as the full school committee, so that's what I'd love to put forward for discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Carrie, okay, Carrie moves, Julia, seconds, discussion.
And I'll just add that I did, this hasn't been, we, the Finance Subcommittee has not had a chance to discuss this. But I did have a chance to talk to Joe. Just yesterday, we walked the fields and I absolutely support the hiring of a owner's project manager. This is going to be, you know. If not complex or complicated, at least, you know, a relatively large project and. We want it to go as smoothly as possible and we want it to be such that it does not. Draw on the time and energy of our administration anymore than need be, so. It's a good move.
Thanks, Carrie. Anybody else? Ursula, did you have your hand up?
I don't think so, but I, I just wanted to say that I, I hadn't heard this before either, but I, I agree with the idea and I think it makes sense, so I support it.
Julia?
Also in great supportive of it, but I do feel like I missed, or maybe we haven't discussed the ballpark of what. No pun intended, but, but I, I, like, is it, how is, what's the number, dollar value we're talking about? Range?
I actually would have a difficult time pinning that up tonight, as far as a range that we will see in responses, you know, if. Because this is far smaller than your typical, say, MSBA building project, of course, where, where I think we would all know the ranges that people have seen. This is something where. I, I, I think we're going to need to assemble what we think the responsibilities and the, the challenges will be for an OPM, and then get it out and see what those responses are. So I don't, I don't have a good. Frame of reference for that full, full trajectory for them.
On that same note, I would assume then this will be funded out of the Williams College gift as basically part of the project.
Yes. Which could be something Carrie to add to that motion. Just to make, make sure it's clear as we, as we go forward.
I would accept that, Julia, and do you accept that?
Yes.
Jose.
Thank you, Christina, and I, could I just, Carrie, have you repeat the motion, just to make sure, even with the amendment, to make sure I understand what we're, we're voting, voting on?
Joe, I think, has the language of the motion.
To. And, and now I feel like I'm, I'm trying to repeat what, what I had said before as precisely as I can, but I would say to. Give the responsibility to the Finance Subcommittee and the Administration to select an owner's project manager for the. Field and track. Project. And to. Fund that owner's project manager contract out of the Williams College gift to Mount Graylock Regional School.
Thanks, Joe, and then the, I think what I heard in your response to. To Julia is that we don't have necessarily a job description. Precisely crafted for what this person would be asked to do, and, and I guess my other, other question, the question really, that I, that I have is, is who. Will this person answer to presumably the Administration and the Finance Subcommittee? Or could we expect this person, whoever were to fulfill these responsibilities to. Meet with the full committee, to be able to answer questions that we might have directly of, of the project?
I think that's something that when the Finance Committee reviews and talks through what the scope. Should be. Whether or not the Finance Subcommittee includes. Reports back to the full school committee on some regular basis, that, that is, you know, that's something that I'm sure as far as an OPM concerned would. Would be concerned would add cost, but at the same time, it might be considered a valuable tool to have. But in any situation, the contract would be held by the school committee. And the OPM would ultimately be responsible to the school committee.
And then final question, Joe, the. What is the advantage from your perspective of approving this motion without. The job description sort of finalized or presented to the, to the full committee?
The advantage would be that we could potentially navigate the process to developing the request for services, get it out. Get responses in, vet them, and make a selection prior to a month from now. Okay, thank you. Probably actually come, I, I think, given a reasonable timeline, we would probably take a couple of weeks to make sure we had. Something ready and it would take a couple of weeks of having it out for people to respond to. And then after that, the selection would happen pretty quickly based on. The qualifications that, that were provided in the selection criteria.
Okay, and this, this, this election would happen, as I think, as the motion states. By the Finance Subcommittee and the Administration. I think I still have, I maybe, maybe what you're hearing is some concern about the lack of clarity. And details with regards to, you know, the responsibilities of this person, and maybe they, maybe they're so. Commonplace in terms of what an OPM is. Expected to do in their performance, but I, I'm not well-versed in OPM duties. But so I think, I think I have some concern about, about this, I'd like to hear perhaps from the Finance Subcommittee, members of the Finance Subcommittee, or maybe Carrie as Chair. About what you all think about this moving forward.
So Jose, I think I can talk about the OPM in terms of the large building project that we just, you know, did. The OPM is really. Works for the owner. It's owner's project manager, works for the owner to protect the owner from errors. To potentially save money because things are caught further in advance than they might. Because they're knowledgeable about these kinds of projects, we would want to hire someone who has potentially done, you know, track and field. Before, or managed that kind of a project, they know what to look for. Where errors can happen, they help to facilitate the communication between the owner and the. Folks who are actually doing the work, right, who have hands on the ground. It, in my experience, it. And I think we're going to talk about another project tonight that is costing, you know, more money than, than we thought it might. It's kind of saying where an owner's project manager. Could in the long run save money for the district in terms of. Things that might be overlooked by people like us who are not fully experienced with building fields and putting in tracks.
This is Steve, I'll, I'll just add to this, something that Carrie said earlier. That, you know, one of the reasons we regionalized was so that our administration would be able to spend their time on the big issues of the district, you know, when we were. Three school districts, they had a lot of meetings that were just to repeat, the big building project was a tremendous amount of time. For the senior administration, and so I do strongly support, you know, bringing in someone to assist with this, thank you.
Thanks, Steve, Ursula?
Yeah, I still have a question, and I also say this as someone who doesn't know exactly how this works, given that this is a state. Monitored or whatever, building project, is this something where you go to the state and say, we're looking for an OPM, or is this a private bid from a private local? bid from a private local company that would, okay, I don't know if it was a state directed program.
We need to follow a state approved process for selecting.
But it was a local project manager type of?
It could be a local, it could certainly be a local firm. They would just need to carry qualifications into the process that, that we could identify and, and approve. In terms of cost, Julia, a, a norm would be 3% of the overall project cost. So if the project was a $3 million project, we might look at $90,000. The, the other comp that we have is, and I, and I don't think it's a great one for our situation, but the OPM that was used for this building that I'm in right now. We brought them in even, we, we had an architect already selected. So Perkins Eastman was continuing through other, other work. So we did not utilize the OPM at the point of designer selection. And then they were kind of an OPM light in some ways by, by the nature of their, their contract. That was $42,000 in total on a two point, $2 million project. So I mean, that's, that's the range that we've seen, but a lot for up.
Julia, did you have another question?
I did. Thank you, Joe, for that. And so I just want to make sure I understand the motion in front of us. We are, there's a motion to approve the subcommittee and the administration to draft the request for services and put it out to bid, but we would approve the contract and hopefully at our next meeting. So we would still have a chance to look at it. And I mean, not that you can change much at that point, but we still at least have an up or down vote.
Yes, we, yeah.
Right. No, I would, I would say, well, absolutely. Yes, the school committee will approve the contract. No one will be hired without school committee approval, but if the committee also wants to review the request for proposals, then we could potentially have a special meeting to do that. So we're really just trying to, I think Joe is trying to expedite the process. We're not trying to, it doesn't sound like, you know, he's trying to bypass the school committee, but if there's concern, and I'm hearing this also from Jose, maybe we discuss the request for proposals at the full committee level before it goes out on the, on the street. I'm not sure. Joe, how do you feel about that?
Yeah. In, in that case, I think we would probably look for a special meeting. Not next week, but late the week following to review and, and approve a request for services that would then go out and then the full school committee could then, I, I think you would probably end up during that meeting appoint a subcommittee to, to then review what comes in. It would, it would be within the context of an open meeting. But it, it could be the full seven too. So you could have another special meeting about two weeks later.
Jose?
Thanks, Christina. Thinking about, you know, ways to, to find efficiencies in this process. I think, I think at the moment as the motion stands, I think Julia articulated it. Well, for me, and I think, I think it's what you, what you, you also said, Joe, right? Although my memory is going fuzzy. So the, we're looking to the administration and the finance subcommittee to put out a bid for, or put out a call for, for this service. Maybe implicit in this motion, I, I just want to make that clear. If before, you know, were we then assuming that this finance subcommittee and the administration would then select a finalist that then would be reviewed by the full committee? Is that the process at the moment that we're we, we might be on the verge of committing ourselves to, is it?
Yes, as the motion stands.
Okay. All right. I, so I think hearing from Carrie, you know, I, for my, my vantage, you know, I trust both the finance subcommittee and the administration to carry out that process and, and look forward to reviewing the final selection or nomination by, by the finance of committee at our next full committee meeting.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion moved by Carrie, seconded by Julia. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green eye.
Open I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes.
All right. So the next sub item here is one that I haven't been looking forward to for the last week. The facilities building that is, that is currently starting to go up on the right back behind me, if you were to look through that window. The we're at a point where in order for us to make to do all of the things that we need to do to make that building very functional for the purpose of cold storage for all of the various items that we have that, that need to get out of the weather that need long-term storage. We are, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, but then I'll back into the details. We are requesting an additional $134,000. That takes us across all of the work that we need to do with respect to having a driveway that leads up to it. All of the electrical work, drainage to protect from water running off and, and pouring down towards and across that foundation as well as just the cost associated with the additional requirements that came out of structural engineers work and understanding how to, how to make sure that the building can go up per, per code and be approved. It's a, it is partly because costs are much higher now than they were a year and a half ago, when, when we first considered this. Part of it is that the competitive quotes that, that are coming back for the various things that I'm talking about there are all coming in higher, you know, three, four, five different vendors, all producing higher, higher numbers. And, and the other side of it, that, that I won't sugarcoat is that we, the district certainly underspecified the, the foundation, the need for drainage, the reality that that it would be an island within, within a very muddy area down there. If we don't have a proper driveway constructed leading up to it. And, and the requirements around the electrical that, that is needed in order to make the building so that it can be used completely and functionally. So that's what I'm putting out there, but I expect plenty of questions and I hope I can at least answer them somewhat directly.
Julia has her hand up.
I have maybe two questions to start. One is, did we have an OPM on this?
We did not.
Okay.
Good question.
Second, I thought, like you mentioned, the competitive bids coming in now and prices have gone up. I guess I'm confused because my understanding of public bidding is you do the subs, then the general uses the subs bids. And that's your whole bid? Like, how are the, how are the subcontractor or the, how are the bids coming in now more, more pricey than expected?
So given, given the way this project evolved, the district specified a building that it, that it wanted, a prefabricated type. All of the steel arrives with all the bolts, the, the paneling, the doors, the insulation, it arrives on site. It arrived six months after it was ordered. Which was much delayed versus, versus how that was originally supposed to happen. The, in the meantime, the plan had been that the site work required would be one project where quotes would be, would be requested. That then the erection of the building would be separate. And, and so on, electrical would be separate. The original plan was also for insulation, heat. That process definitely did not go as it could have or should have. And as a result, we are now in a position where every step along the way, things have not gotten done as efficiently as they, as they could have or should have. And things have been delayed numerous times. And, and we're now staring at these costs as opposed to any others or as opposed to say a single bid for an entire project with subs within that. So that's where we are. And, and I have learned my lessons from a variety of different angles here.
Do, can you provide, thank you for that explanation. And can you provide just some numbers on this? I, at least as it stands now, the total, now the expected total cost of this building and it's, I believe it's coming out of our Williams College gift. And what impact that may have on what is left in the Williams College gift?
The total cost across the, you know, to, to looking forward to completion and over the past 18 months, it's going to end up being, if this request is approved, it would be $314,000 in total. That had that goes across the cost of, of the building itself. The site work, the erection, the drainage, the electrical, the driveway. And the additional structural engineering and and components that go into meeting those requirements from the structural engineer as it relates to a steel building going, going up as a cold storage facility.
And this is also for the cross-country team or that's?
The cross, so part of what, part of what brought us to this place initially is it was determined that the cross-country team and the athletic teams in the other seasons would utilize the, the entirety or almost the entirety of the building that is up and right alongside. And so that pole barn structure wooden, wooden framing that went up in 2020, 2021. That structure was, it was different as far as the way the code treats it. And I think that's something that the district underestimated, the, the degree to which the, the wood framed building of that sort versus the steel building that is going up in the back. There, there are some significant differences there that I think were, were not treated as carefully as they could have or should have been. And so that pole barn is serving Nordic along with athletic storage. It is also throughout the pandemic. Served as a, as a cafeteria, as storage for all of, all of the things that we needed to shift out of the main building in order to create six feet of spacing within the rest of the cafeteria. So it's, it's served a variety of purposes and, and this new structure will serve to, serve for storage. It will serve for all of the implements and equipment that we do not need in a, in a temperature controlled environment. And it, it will, it will be well utilized.
And, and sorry, the second part of that question was the impact on the Williams College gift.
So the college gift as of January of 2022, the value is $4.7 million across the principal and interest. That $4.7 million of that, we had $300,000. It was still outstanding for finishing off this construction project as it relates to baseball, softball and accessibility to the southern part of campus. So $300,000, yep.
That number for the baseball and softball? Sorry, I just missed that.
$300,000 was remaining on that contract outstanding. And the, and 200 and if, if we take into account everything that we're asking for here tonight, $270,000 for this project. So that's 270 plus 300, $570,000 would come off of that 4.7 as of as of January of 2022.
About how much for the new field? Wasn't that?
At the, at the high end. And this was when we had looked at it as a synthetic turf field along with a track. We had looked at 2.7, 2.8. That was, that was for all of that all in, but that was back when the design had the track going up in a different corner of the campus, a synthetic turf field going back behind. So it's a little bit apples to oranges there with, with a number of things, but it was also a year and a half ago, over a year ago. So a new cost estimate will, will be needed in order to actually get that close to, close to bed.
Jose?
Thanks, Christina. And then Joe, I, I, I think I, I know, or at least certainly hope that answer to this question. If we, I don't, has, and I think I've already, I've lost track here in this conversation. Has a motion been made for this item in the agenda? So we've already made the motion to approve this cost adjustment or there's a, there's a
No.
Have not made the motion yet. Okay. I didn't think so. My memory, memory is not what it used to be. But assuming we, we do make a motion, it does get seconded and, and that motion passes. Do you feel confident, Joe, that, that then you'll have enough in place in terms of a budget to see this project to its fruition, to, to being final? You don't see, you don't foresee any, any additional expenses that, that can arise?
I, I feel like this number has enough padding within it that we will safely finish this without needing to come back. This is the second time that I've come back. And I have a very high level of confidence in the people and the process that we're using right now to make sure that we are at least overestimating costs as well as the degree to which we are now. The team is fully engaged in making sure that we get this done and get this done so that it's very functional for the next 30, 40 years.
Thanks.
Carrie?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Joe, Joe said that he's learned a lot of lessons. He's, he's, you know, fixing the situation. So, you know, let's, let's make sure that we understand that Joe, Joe is coming, he's come in to, to manage this. He's essentially become the project manager and, you know, this is, we don't want to do this to him again. Which is why we're hiring a project manager for, for the, for the next project, which will be quite a bit bigger. So thank you, Joe, for solving this problem. And it is what it is. It's an investment in the management of all of our fields. Right? Because our big equipment is going to go into the structure and you know, we'll, we'll just look at it that way. You know, we'll we'll just look at it that way as far as I'm concerned.
Carrie, would you like to make a motion?
I'm sure. What was the number again?
Four thousand dollars additional from the Williams College gift to Mount Greylock Regional School for the. Completion of the facilities building project.
So moved.
Hey, moves. Do I have a second?
A second.
Julia, second. Any further discussion? Julia.
I a hundred percent understand that these, here we are and we need to move forward. I just want to name my, I I feel I need to name my nervousness around what will be left in the Williams College gift. And I understand that was the January projection for the how much was there and the market's gone haywire. And expenses are only going up. And so I I don't, I just, I needed to say that out loud. And if there's anything else that, you know, I I just think we all need to be very cognizant of that. There we are, seems like we're perilously close to being less than potentially less than a million dollars left. After the fields, the bigger fields project, which is not where we had wanted to be. So that's all.
Thanks, Julia. Carrie.
Yeah, Julia, just remember, we won't spend the money if we're not comfortable. I mean, this has happened twice before with the synthetic field. If the natural field and track come in higher than what we're comfortable with in terms of what funds are left. And we'll have a new number by the time that number comes in, you know, then we make a decision based on that information.
Yeah, I just wanted to support what Julie was saying and just always be mindful that every time we choose to go to. The Williams Endowment, not only is it getting smaller for this year, but it means we have less money to be writing the endowment, hopefully providing even more in the future. And so, you know, we really do need to consider how much of the money do we want to be choosing to come from the endowment versus asking the towns? Because your long term, if we can keep the money in the endowment, long term, that should be a good strategy. Thank you.
Thanks. Other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constance, you know.
Elfin, by an eye.
Green eye.
Ursula.
Free Malloy, I. Sorry.
No problem.
Mila, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. And with that, I am I am done for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our superintendent report. So I will turn it over to our superintendent, Jake McCamlass.
Thank you, Christina. I'm just gonna do a share screen. I have a presentation to to really keep me organized. More than more than anything else and several items to to go through tonight by way of a superintendent's report. Just for a little table of contents, you have your agendas, but for folks watching at home. Going to start off with some congratulations that are not on the agenda. Then we have the DEIB director draft job description for you to take a look at. It should also be in your packets. A brief overview of where we're going with school choice for the twenty two twenty three school year and then the actual slots. Want to start the conversation about naming the baseball field, Messina Field, as Coach Paris mentioned in the in the public. Input section of tonight. I know John Benziger, assistant coach and and parent and community member is is on. The call, I think, to 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 weigh in during that portion too, if any school committee members have questions. Just a quick overview of Mount Greylock Regional School end of year events, mostly for your your calendars. And then an MOU guiding cold weather recess practices, which I intended to have on tonight for a vote by the school committee. But which I neglected to put vote on the agenda. So we'll be introducing it to you tonight. And we will have it back on the agenda in May for an official vote. And I apologize for that. First of all, congratulations and well done to our our newly minted unified track and field team. This is a picture that the superintendent from Central Berkshire, Leslie Blake Davis, shared with me last night. Really made my evening. You can see our team for the most part over here, although Aiden. Definitely infiltrated our our competitive territory there. So good for him. Not surprised that he has friends everywhere he goes. But really grateful to the coaches and the folks who make this happen, very grateful to the athletes who are who are out there competing. And I believe their next meet is again at Wacona in the two weeks from last night. So not the Wednesday of break, but the Wednesday after break. So we wish them well and I understand from some of the parents involved, they had some pretty worn out athletes when they got home last night. So that's speaking as a parent, that's always a good thing. Also want to share some congratulations with 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 five students here in particular. Eddie Brannon, who's a senior, has been awarded his Eagle Scout. His brother James, I think, was awarded at the same time. James, I believe, is at UMass right now. And then Nolan mentioned it earlier tonight, but Vincent Welch had the privilege of watching him. Along with his mom and dad and grandpa and Principal Pratt installed the Gaga pit. You really do have to stop down and see that in action. It's hard to wrap your head around until you actually see it, but I can assure you that Vincent is a star because he is the one that got the Gaga pit. Happening at Lanesboro. His his older brother Anthony is also going to be awarded his Eagle Scout. And and you know, that Eagle Scout is a big deal. You you have to be active in the troop for at least six months as what's known as a lifetime scout. You have to provide written references from clergy, from family, from school officials. You have to have earned twenty one merit badges over your career. And then, you know, sort of the culminating project is you have to carry out a an Eagle Scout service project to your community. And thinking back over the years that that I have known Eagle Scouts as a professional educator. These these young folks have really done some really good value adds to their community. And we're very grateful to all of these students and very proud of all of these students. So well done. And we're also just incredibly proud of Mackenzie Sheehy, who is a senior. She is off to Duke University next year and we can't wait to see what she does down there. But Mackenzie was named a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And just for a bit of reference, for those of you that aren't familiar with the National Merit Scholarship Competition and Program. About a million and a half students a year enter into the program by taking their PSATs as juniors. Of that million and a half. Young people who who sit for the PSATs, the fifty thousand highest scorers are considered. For recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. So from one point five million to the fifty thousand highest scorers. Thirty four thousand students are then recommended for letters of commendation. So you're a commended National Merit Scholar. And then it gets down to about sixteen thousand from that million and a half who are recognized as being semifinalists. And then ultimately fifteen thousand students from all of the young people who this year are graduating. From from high schools, private, public, independent parochial charter from around the country. Who took the PSATs their junior year. Of that million and a half, fifteen thousand are ultimately selected and honored as finalists. And and so to consider Mackenzie, who is an outstanding athlete, an outstanding student. And most importantly, just an outstanding young person with with character and integrity and a work ethic. That the next ten of us would be envious of the dedication and work ethic that she brings to everything that she does. She is now a finalist in that program and coming up here later in the school year. The 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 two thousand five hundred winners of that competition will be announced. And so to all of these students, recognizing all of them are for Eagle Scouts or three Eagle Scouts and one alumni Eagle Scout. And then Mackenzie, just just a few examples of just stellar stellar life performance. From the young people that were honored to serve here. And so to do Eddie and Anthony and Vincent and to Mackenzie. Well done. Where the entire community is incredibly proud of you. And so now moving into the to the items that are actually on the agenda. We we do have the the diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging director position description. In your packets tonight. Very grateful. A lot of people have weighed in on this, some just really, really heavily. And and I and we are indebted to them. That includes our students, many of our educators, our administrative team. And we happen to live in a community where there's just a lot of of A dedication and B expertise. Around this type of vital, vital work. And and I am grateful to all of the folks that weighed in on this. It's still a draft. It's still evolving. And we know it's it's always kind of staggering when you look at a position description. I'm just going to pull this up as I'm talking. When when you put together a position description, particularly for something as important as this is. It's it's just a little bit overwhelming to consider that there really is not anybody who can fulfill. Everything that we are looking for. And so there are some amazing people in in the greater world. And even here locally that do this work, but but we understand that this is our our wish list. We understand that that when we actually get somebody in and get the processes run and make a hire. That nobody will be able to fulfill these these expectations. But but we do want, we we are looking for a wonderful dedicated expert person. And then, you know, looking at what their strengths are and what some of their learning areas are, we can really customize what the actual work is. To 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 to, you know, best support the individual who actually has this job. I don't know if you have questions about this. I would encourage you to look at it. It is part of the school committee packet. So I would ask folks in the community to pull up that packet and take a look at it. We we are, you know, still looking at at certain pieces of this. And, you know, we had an interesting conversation about should we require a DUCY license? Should we not require a DUCY license? Really, the the space where that matters most is is that that will determine which retirement system. The individual goes into, we must require somebody and hire somebody with a DUCY license. If we want this to be a mass teachers retirement system position. Berkshire County Retirement, which is essentially a a parallel system with the same benefits and the same requirements. If we don't have a licensed person. Steve, I I see your hand up. We'll just go into questions now. So Steve, can you start us off?
Yes, so I thank you again and thank you everybody for all the work on this. I particularly like how you were describing this as a draft that has been worked on by many voices in the community. And what is particularly nice about that is this is a chance for other people to look at it now and have a chance to provide feedback to us before we go further. So we just you encourage everybody who is, you're watching this at home to take a look at this and you'll send out feedbacks. I assume they should send it to you?
Yes, yes.
Yes, perfect. And then the other thing is that this might have been on some of the policy stuff that was removed. But I think at one point we had some documents that were enumerating a lot of different. Categories. And I'm always a little bit concerned when we enumerate, because when you make a list, there's always the danger of what if we forget something? And so just as a rule of thumb, I just prefer your more just your general language, you know, we value, we do not discriminate on any grounds. You we want someone who will help work to an inclusive environment. And this is going to be for a variety of axes. From cultural identity to religious, political, medical beliefs. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for that invitation for everybody in the community to who's interested, please take a look at this. And and please feel free to weigh in. And and I will certainly ask the school committee to give it a. A a particularly close look. And 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 certainly get your feedback back to me, you know, individually. Or we can can approach this again in a in a in a future meeting. I don't see any more hands.
Carrie.
Thank you.
Just wondering, when when would you hope to post for this position?
Yeah, be because I am such a long serving superintendent and have the full dose of paranoia. That comes from from that status. I am I am always nervous about posting new positions. Prior to town meetings, actually approving our budget. I I would see us posting this in early May as a proposed position. So we so we can get people thinking about it. And so we're not, I feel like we're kind of behind now. I don't want to be further behind, but we will have language that does not guarantee that we will move forward with this. If the funding is not available via our our two town meetings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna do a quick scroll through. Jose?
Sorry, Jake.
I'm glad I scrolled.
I thought I was hiding somewhere in your on your screen. You know, I I, you know, given the 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 time I've had with the document, you know, think that the it all seems. Appropriate and and exciting in in all honesty. If we move forward to a place where the towns have approved our budget. And we have a a final draft that we we post of the of the job description and the job ad. What do you see in terms of, well? Yeah, what do you see in terms of next steps, in terms of how you see an interview and a selection process playing out?
Yeah, but between now and when this actually gets posted, we will be identifying the the. The the resume review panel, which will also serve as the as the first round of interview panel. It it's going to be large. I I I sort of cringe at the thought of welcoming somebody into a room or onto a Zoom. With with fifteen or eighteen people there as the first round. But but I think to get the the group that we want and honestly that we need, it's it's going to be fifteen to eighteen people. And they they will be helping with going through the resumes. I am getting some some professional help in in sort of directing and facilitating that work. So we have a very clear picture of 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 what we're looking for. We'll be doing just a little bit of training in advance of that. Right, right now, the three people that I know for certain that are on that panel are three middle and high school students. Those are, those are the three individuals that we've we've kind of identified as for shores. And then, you know, also considering, is is this a two round? Is this a three round? Some of that's determined by by how many applicants that we get. And and really, again, getting some professional guidance around. You know, we we don't, it's not fair to make this position. Do levels and activities that we don't ask of anybody else, including the superintendent's position. But it's also very important that this individual, that the successful individual has a real opportunity to get to know us. And get to know our communities and get to know our school district and and and. and get to know our communities and get to know our school district and, 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 you know, certainly we, we enter into this knowing that we are being interviewed in many ways just as much as we are doing an interview. Um, so, so all I know for sure right, right now, Jose, we're gonna have lots of help and it is going to be a process that includes many people. I think that's a, that's a necessary.
Yeah, and then, sorry Julie, just to follow up on that point, Jake, uh, that, the, the fifteen individuals that are gonna include, I think uh, in an important way, the three middle school and high school students, are you, are you looking to uh, members of our respective communities uh, who, who might have ex- professional experience in this area, like who, in terms of how you imagine this, this committee or panel? Okay, great.
We, we, we would like, we would like some professional representation. Um, you know, parents, guardians, caretakers, obviously. A community member or two who don't necessarily have um, you know, a, a, a personal stake in this, but who care deeply about their communities. Um, yes.
Thank you.
Julie, you're welcome, Jose. Thank you. Julia?
Um, I feel like the hu- one of the hardest things about this process is gonna be attracting a talent pool. Um, and I just wonder, I, it not, I mean, hopefully there's wonderful people right in this community who are appropriate to apply, but how are you expanding the talent pool? Or is that also to be worked on? But I just want to make sure that that's really.
Yeah, we.
Well considered.
Uh, I, I could probably name twenty or thirty people who have offered to get the word out on this on national and international networks. Um, and I, and I, and I think we're looking to a, to a couple of very specific networks to go above and beyond school spring. Um, for, for this one in particular, but I, I do, there is clearly, there's clearly an ability in our communities to get the word out into the, the, the types of places where, where professionals that are looking for these kind of, this kind of challenging work in school districts will hear about it. And, and we will be finalizing that too as we move forward. Thanks, Julia. Hey, I'm gonna do another quick scroll. Christina, do you see any?
I don't see any other.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go back to the slide presentation. Thank you for that uh, conversation, folks. And happy to speak with anybody individually about that. Um, we, we do wanna, I, and I'm gonna try and get through this quickly. Uh, school choice, so just gonna do a brief overview of school choice for folks watching at home, for any school committee members that maybe have some, some information gaps. Um, if we wish to continue as a school choice district, and I strongly recommend that we do because we, it plays maybe not a key feature, but it is a feature of our budgetary preparations. Um, if we intended to continue as a district that participates in school choice, we do not need to do anything this evening. Um, simply by not voting to pull away from school choice, we are letting the state know that we are continuing into school choice and we will do that in a letter that we have no change in status. Um, so the reason there's no vote on this is because uh, I would not recommend that we leave uh, uh, being a participant in school choice. And um, and we, we are going to continue that we are, that we, that we do stay a participant and that requires no action at all. Um, just, just a quick overview of school choice. It was adopted by the Commonwealth as part of the nineteen ninety-three Ed Reform Acts. Um, the district does have decision-making power over whether to accept school choice students in or not. The district has no authority to say to a family or a parent or a guardian or a caretaker, you may not choice your student into another district. So we are one-way gatekeepers if we chose to be, which, which we're not. Um, a district, uh, so a district can choose whether to accept, a district cannot choose whether to send. That is, that is a, a right that's maintained by families and guardians. Um, the Mount Greylock Regional School District and the two-member towns uh, prior to regionalization and then the, the uh, high school district or the middle and high school district of Mount Greylock, all longtime participants in accepting uh, Commonwealth School Choice Program participants from other towns. Um, the, the, the records at the state level indicate that, that at least since nineteen ninety-six, and my guess would be that local records may indicate that, that it was even earlier at that, although the Ed Reform Act really didn't start um, being put into action until ninety-five or ninety-six. So it could be that we've been a part of school choice through its entire history. Some key things to remember about school choice, once a student is accepted into the district via school choice, that student now has a right to graduate from our school district, just like a resident student. Um, for that reason, choices made at the elementary level will impact the middle and high school down the road. Um, I don't even wanna say negatively or positively. I think overall it's, it's a positive impact. It adds to our diversity. It adds to our geographic diversity. Um, I, I think I've heard Steve make the point several times that, and I would agree, that a, a high school that is not too large, but large enough can continue to offer a wider array of courses for its high school students particularly. Um, another key point about school choice is the transportation is not provided. A family must provide their own transportation if they are a school choice participant coming into our district. In general, a school choice student comes with a five thousand dollar school choice tuition attached. Interestingly enough, that was the uh, dollar amount that was set in nineteen ninety-three. And that is the dollar amount that continues um, through until uh, next year. And, and I am thinking probably ten years and twenty years down the road from that. Um, our school district in following the, the state law and the state regulations that govern school choice via local policy, we do two random selections for open school choice slots every year. The first is um, as school is ending, between the last week of school and July one, we do our first random drawing. And then we look at where our numbers are over the entirety of the summer. And then our second and our last school choice drawing for the year actually happens the week before school opens. I am uh, somebody, please let me know if anybody has a hand up because I have you all minimized so I can see my presentation. Um, just.
Julia, it looks like Julia has.
Oh, Julia, please.
I, sorry, I can wait until you keep going. I had a couple of quick questions, but.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to ask them now? Just, and I can tell you if I'm gonna cover them or not. And if not, I'll just answer them.
Super simple question. If somebody is school choicing from out, you know, outside on transportation, can they get to a Mount Greylock bus stop and still go in to Mount Greylock?
There are school districts that do that. Um, that's a pretty common practice in the Birchers. If you are to follow the rules completely that the state lays out, that answer is no. Um, if, if a request comes into a school district and it is something that's doable, that you can get to a bus stop, most districts would, would work to find a way to make that happen. But, but technically the answer to that should be no.
Um, second question on the um, selection timeline and process.
Yes.
Um, I assume that's a lottery kind of?
It is, it is a lottery. It is a lottery and it's um, it's, it's very straightforward, names in a hat. And it's drawn out in front of witnesses.
And, and do siblings have preference?
Siblings do have preference. Siblings do have preference. I, I would need to go back and look at our exact policy. Um, but there, there is some language that does direct the, the superintendent to offer um, sibling preference. And I can find that policy and send it to you, Julia, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, um, for folks at home, just, just, you know, suggesting how we approach school choice and how I think school choice was initially envisioned back in the early nineties. Um, if you think of this as a classroom, a very small classroom and a very traditionally set-up classroom, but for illustrative purposes, it really works. Um, so you have a classroom, you could have nine students in the class. You only have seven students in the class. This is the ideal situation for school choice. You, you have what are hypothetically two empty seats. Um, bringing in two additional students at five thousand dollars per student does not add to your labor costs. It, it does not add to your administrative costs. It doesn't add to the facilities cost. You don't have to buy extra desk. It doesn't add to your utilities. And it doesn't negatively impact the organization or the operation of, of the school, the district, or most importantly, the classroom. Um, so that's really what school choices was designed to do, was to fill in those, those empty seats. Um, and that is exactly how we utilize school choice uh, here in our school district. I'm sorry, I'm searching around frantically for a, for a sticky note, one of the hundred Post-it notes I have on my desk to remind me of things. Um, you, you could, you could look at school districts in um, in, even in Berkshire County that are, that are twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, almost up to forty percent um, driven by school choice. That, that, that one school district is, is literally thirty-nine point something of their entire student body or school choice students. Um, because Lanesboro and Williamstown remain very attractive places to live. Um, and our own enrollments are holding steadier with students that live in Lanesboro. Um, and then New Ashford and Hancock and Williamstown. Um, w- w- we, we don't have as many empty seats as some of our neighbors have. And our philosophy, I think, is quite different that um, I think really we, we don't exceed seven or eight percent in any of our individual schools around the number of students that are school choice in as a percentage of the, of the total school population. Um, a- and I think for districts that are demographically like ours, size-wise like ours, uh, that ten to fifteen percent is, is a pretty good, looks to me like it's a pretty good target across the Commonwealth. Um, just to give you, because we discussed this at our last special school committee meeting where we were really focusing in on school choice for one of our member towns, this is just uh, over the lifetime of the region. This doesn't go back and look at our three individual schools prior to regionalization. If you can see um, working backwards from, from this current, from this current year of twenty-one, twenty-two, six point three percent of our population this year is school choice, six point four going back to last year, seven point two the year before, eight point one the year before that. If you really go back in time, you would see that, that Williamstown and Lanesboro have a relatively small percentage of school choices, their total population. Um, Mount Greylock Regional once upon a time was, was it, was, you know, twenty percent of students attending the regional middle and high school before we were a, a full region. Um, but that's going back really, you know, fifteen, sixteen years ago. You can see that this year we brought in seventy-four school choice students, just for your information, thirty-nine students from, from between our two towns chose to go out to, to other school districts. That does not include students that choose to attend Bart Charter Public School or McCann. And so, you know, this gives you, we've, we've been fairly steady with sort of our over-under, our, our ratio of students coming in to students going out. Um, our percentages are, have been under ten percent for years and years and years, and, and we will remain there. But look at, at.
Jake, Ursula had her hand up. I don't know.
Sorry, thank you. Ursula, do you want to go ahead?
Sorry, I put it down. I was just gonna ask if students at uh, McCann were, were considered school choice, but then you answered that, so I've, so they're not, that's not considered part of these numbers.
No, no. No, the way regional vocational schools work is those, those are students that are tuitioning to another public school. Um, so they're not part of the school choice number. Um, the, the dollar figures that follow those students, Ursula, and for everybody else, um, cause lots of folks don't know this, the state actually sets the tuition rate for McCann. The state sets the tuition rate for Toconics vocational programs tends to be three to four times what school choice uh, tuition rate is. And there's really good reason for that. It's um, uh, you know, capital costs alone um, for, for regional school districts and equipment costs are massive uh, to stay current with the technology that's out there. So those, those tuitions tend to be um, you know, literally three to four times what the school choice tuition is, but those students are not included in this number. Um, to give you a vision.
Jake, Jake, sorry, can you just stop there for a second?
Yeah.
The tuitions to um, vocational schools are those, those are paid by the town? The towns that the kids are coming from, whereas the students who choice out, that actually is paid by the regional school district.
That's correct.
To the other.
That's correct. So, so these thirty-nine students that chose to choice out of our district this year, that is a bill that we pay as a regional school district. The tuition into McCann is a bill that goes to the town of Lanesboro and a bill that goes to the town hall of Williamstown to pay. And that's, that's state statute as to how that works. And, and that includes transportation from the town to, to the regional school district. Okay, anybody else before I move on? Gonna do a quick scroll. I don't see anybody, but, but please, please just jump in. Um, folks, so looking at, at the openings that we are. I'm sorry, Steve, can you say that again?
I just wanted to say one quick thing. First of all, I do agree with what you said about what I said. Uh, uh, just, just for the record. And you know, the second thing is, you know, similar to the, you know, incredible diversity school choice allows us to get. When you have a small school district with the sizes we have for our grades, this is extremely important so that we can have, you know, varied extracurricular activities, that we can have teams, that we can have classes at all different levels. And you are, it's just really, I think, worth emphasizing the curricular, extracurricular, social needs for something like this. And it just, you're put on the table, uh, working with other school districts to try to have some virtual classes as well.
Right.
Yeah, this is something we've, you know, talked about and we have the technology to do this now to help increase these needs when we have, you know, small niches that would, you know, really benefit from additional opportunities in various sections. And I know we've, you've got some shared sports programs as well. I think it would be worth discussing some shared academics as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Um, l- l- looking forward into, into the openings that, that we have on paper now, that if we were going to hold the, the school choice um, drawing tomorrow, these would be the uh, the, the openings that would be on the table. We discussed Lanesboro quite a bit uh, a week ago, you know, looking at two openings, a kindergarten. Kindergarten is always a moving target because we really don't know until kindergarten starts and even a week or two in, how many kindergartners we're, we're going to have. But based on information that we, that we do have um, from our towns, from, from uh, local census data, uh, Lanesboro made the choice to open up two slots. Williamstown is opening up. You can see because of robust uh, you know, in-town student population, uh, you know, we're, we're not opening up any slots of grade one or grade two in our elementary schools. Lanesboro is, is proposing four for grade three. Williamstown's proposing two, grade four. Lanesboro's proposing three. Uh, Williamstown's proposing two, grade five. Lanesboro's proposing six. That's a smallish grade. Williamstown again is proposing two. Uh, grade six in Lanesboro, we are not looking at any new school choice openings. Uh, we're looking at two new school choice openings for grade six at Williamstown Elementary. Uh, we're looking at two new school choice openings for grade six at Williamstown Elementary School. Um, working really to keep our early childhood classes at around sixteen, that's grades K one and two. And looking at really, we could go up to twenty-two or so in, uh, in our, um. In our upper elementary classes, we've really tried to stick closer to that eighteen number. Because we, we may pick up students new to the area, uh, over the course of the summer. And we, we don't want to max out through school choice. And then find ourselves with, with classrooms that are just more kids than we're comfortable with. Given our, the staffing and the size of the classrooms. So, you know, just looking through at Lanesboro this year, um, no school choice sixth graders will be graduating. Uh, and at Williamstown, so really no new slots opened up from sixth grade graduation later in June. Williamstown, four students, um, will be leaving Williamstown and coming up the Mount Greylock who are school choice students. This bottom row here, um, you know, at Lanesboro this year, less than, fewer, less than three percent of our student population are school choice. At Williamstown, less than six percent are, uh, are school choice students currently. At the middle and high school level, looking at no new.
Jake, can you just stop there? Sorry for a sec.
Yep.
Sixth grade is, um, we don't typically bring in school choice in sixth grade, do we?
We get requests. I, I think in, in, in the past, I, I don't know if they have typically opened up sixth grade in the past. Cindy and looking at her numbers and assessing the collective need of the sixth grade felt that two was appropriate. And what, what I know from being in a neighboring district is, um. Oh, you know, I think the people that would be most interested in fifth and sixth grade openings. Would tend to be people that are really looking at wanting to be at Mount Greylock Regional School. Um, and that's no offense to either of our, our fine elementary schools. But, but I think we would have families looking at, oh, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply for grade six. Because we really want grade nine through twelve, or we really want grade seven through twelve. So we, I, I sus, we will get applications in those grade levels.
Jake, and I think there are quite a few. Unlike Williamstown and Lanesboro Elementary Schools, the elementary schools end in fifth grade and middle starts in sixth grade.
That is true. That is true. Yeah, like Pittsfield Public Schools, for instance. You know, it's, it's all of, all of the schools have different configurations now. And, uh, and, and it's, and it's tough to keep track of, but, but there are. Uh, we did have sixth grade applications last year. We didn't take any sixth grade students, any new sixth grade students. But I do suspect we will get applications and, and, and for many different reasons.
It just seems like a hard time to come into a school with only one year to kind of. Integrate into the school where most of the kids have been together for.
Since they were born.
Multiple years. Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
But, yeah.
Developmentally speaking, it's, it's, you know, it's an option we want to make available to neighboring families. Uh, I, you know, it's really up to them if they, if they look to make that choice. And, and the different configurations of different schools that we would tend to draw from. Might really impact that. It might, it might be a year where students are going from. Um, a small elementary into a larger middle or a larger middle high. Organically. And so if their, if their students are going to make that kind of a switch, they would see this switch as being, uh, e- equal to, or maybe even less than. Joya, was your hand up?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to say there's a, there's another perspective on sixth grade, for what it's worth, that if you know, if, if you can get into Mount Greylock, seven through twelve. You can at least get to know a smaller group of students and be a part of that group before you transition into the high school. So it's a different way to think about why to come in sixth grade.
That's true. Jose?
Thanks, Jake. Uh, this. Carrie's questions, I think, prompted, prompted this question for me. Uh, at a previous meeting of ours, we talked about the. The strategy of increasing school choice, uh, numbers for Lanesboro to help support the, the school budget there. But you, you also highlighted, there are a number of reasons to, um, you know, support this, this, this school choice program. In Williamstown, those numbers that we're looking at there, just hypothetically, again, if we don't fill those two, uh, seats at, at sixth grade. We're not depending on that to meet our budgetary needs for the school. Is that correct? Or how, how does that, does that play a role in this in any way?
That is correct, Jose. We're, we're, we're not, um. You know, as we discussed last week, if, if, if Lanesboro doesn't have fifteen new students come, that is, you know, we will go back into the standing school choice account. Which is of right now is over a million dollars and, and, and pull those extra funds in order to make their budget work. Um, at, at Williamstown, these were, these were really, um, it's always a budgetary conversation, but it was really more about wanting to. Flesh out classes a little bit further. And then also thinking through to making sure that we have a vibrant, sizable, uh, Mount Greylock Regional School. So it's, it's a, it's the same conversation for ninety-five percent of the conversation, but that five percent in terms of actually impacting budget is different.
Okay. The, uh, follow-up conversation that is just, I think, for clarity. The school choice account or, or, uh, um. Source of funds that we can tap into to help support our, our district budget. The funds, school choice funds for Williamstown Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary and the regional school, they, they must all get. Made a part of, of one account that then can be drawn upon to help support the three schools. Is that how the, the funds get managed?
Yes, yes. And Joe, Joe can weigh in further on that if, if you want further way in, but that is true. Steve?
Yes, one thing I just wanted to add to the conversation about sixth graders is. One of the things which we actually began before we regionalized, was talking about coordinating the curriculas a bit between the elementary schools and the middle high school. And so that is another advantage of people coming in. I can't remember if this was said explicitly.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all of those questions and, and comments, um, folks. So am I okay to move on to, to Mount Greylock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So Mount Greylock, you can see again, and I, I think it, it, you know, Carrie's question about who, who is coming. And taking advantage of, uh, of sixth grade openings. I think that same question is almost. As applicable, maybe more when you get into like tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. However, you know, we do get requests and sometimes, uh, I can tell you probably. What we have had, I've had at least a half a dozen conversations with families this year who, for a variety of reasons. Live here, have home here. This is definitely their child's home in terms of social group, in terms of school. But for a variety of reasons. Cannot continue to live in Williamstown or in Lanesboro. And so we, we do want to always ask the principals, not that they need to be asked. But, but that's considered that we do have students that are our students. That through life circumstances may need to move, but move close enough that they could not have that disruption of changing school. And so some of these spaces will certainly be used that way, thinking through. Stacy and I looked through the applications we have thus far. I think we probably have three right now that would fall into that category. And I've had many conversations over the course of this year, um, about those. So over at Mount Greylock Regional, eight, um, eight students will be graduating, uh, in June that are school choice students. Um, and so really, you know, covering for those eight and, uh, and bringing on one more, these are where the openings are. You can see as of this year, Mount Greylock has forty school choice students, seven point six percent of their total school population. Are, are, uh, are school choice students. And, uh, again, I. You know, I, I know there is, is. In, in every school that is newly constructed, there seems to be this magic number that the MSBA said is your, um. Is your maximum number. I really have yet across the Commonwealth to see a school that is holding itself religiously to that maximum number. Um, you always want to be aware of how crowded classes are, what optimal class sizes are. But, um, my, my take of spending time in Mount Greylock is that, um. You know, we, we could probably ultimately look at, at tend to, you know, maintaining healthy. Number of students coming from the districts that we serve as regional district towns. Lanesboro and Williamstown, the towns that we have agreements with, uh, New Ashford and Hancock. That also look at maybe getting up to ten or even twelve or thirteen percent of our students over there. Either coming from tuition agreements out of state, uh, or, um, school choice slots. So, you know, again, I, I, I think this. Our, our district total represents a, a modest. A modest re-entry into school choice world after two pandemically fueled. Very sparse years of bringing new students in. And, and then we'll see over the course of the summer and next school year, wh- what. Rising interest rates due to the housing market, what new housing opportunities opening up due to our student population. And this is something we really talk about and keep an eye on, um, pretty consistently and constantly over the course of the year. Anything else on school choice? Just that was a, I know you're all shocked that I provided a lengthy overview and I promised a brief overview. Um, after two years together, so I'll, I'll apologize for that. But, um, if, if that's enough of that, we'll, we'll move on to the next topic. And, uh, that is, uh, we did have a request from the community to name a facility or field. And thank you to Coach Paris for, uh, for being online to, uh, to introduce that tonight through the public comment section. Um, the community request, the person that made the request on behalf of many other people is actually on the meeting with us tonight, Ben Ziger. And I wish we, I wish we could have involved John in the OPM conversation because he's probably served as an OPM for. About a half a billion dollars worth of building projects, but we bit our tongues, John, and didn't put you on the spot like that. But John sent a request to the school committee. Do you consider naming our baseball field or newly improved baseball field on campus after Coach Steve Messina? Um, Steve retired in twenty twenty-one after coaching the Mounties baseball team for twenty-eight years. I was thinking about, as Coach Paris was speaking about, uh, Steve here earlier this evening. I was thinking that, that the young guys that Coach Messina coached his first year. Are gonna be fifty years old in like two or three years. That's really, really remarkable. Um, I would encourage all of you to follow this link or just go into Google and, and type in Coach, Coach Steve Messina. Or Mount Greylock and Messina, um, and, and really nice article that, that Howard Herman wrote, um, sort of summarizing. Not only Coach Messina's lengthy career, but his many, many accomplishments. And, um, and, uh, and really in Coach Messina's own words, talks about the fact that, you know, winning this, winning that. Induction into New England Baseball Hall of Fame, all of that is really nice, but what really matters after almost thirty years of, of working with, with young men through baseball. What really matters are those connections that he made each and every year with people who, who, who counted him as, as a friend and a mentor and a coach. Um, our policy on naming fields and facilities can be found at this link. Uh, you know, and really in short, the processes that we, we have the notion put out there. We, we give the community an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. Uh, and that way in will, will come by way of comments back to the school committee or back to me to be shared with the school committee. And then, so we, we kind of consider tonight a first reading. We're introducing the idea of, uh, naming our, our newly upgraded field. After a long-serving, well-respected, uh, member of the athletic community and the educational. Community in general, uh, Coach Messina is a, a dean of students at, at, uh, Wacona, uh, High School over in Central Berkshire. Um, and then in May, on May twelfth, at that meeting, that will really be a second reading. To help you think through how this goes. And that month in between tonight and May twelve is really an opportunity for the community to, to provide feedback. To, to the school committee, uh, to me, to the principal, to the athletic director, all of which will be funneled. To the school committee. Christina, I don't know if you wanted to have John, uh, you know, introduce this as the letter writer and the requester, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, he can introduce it or he could read the letter that he submitted.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, I'm John Benziger. I'm a resident in Williamstown. I've been living here for twenty years. Uh, as, uh, Super Time Mechanist, um. Um, indicated, I, I'm actually a professional OPM. Um, we had the fortune that, um. Uh, I had the fortune of working with Jake on, um, Toconic High School, and we also, um, did Wakona High School. But nevertheless, um, I have been coaching at Greylock for twelve years and, um, my son came up through the program. And I just, um, I thought Steve was an extraordinary individual and, um. As, uh, Super Time Mechanist indicated, it's, it's more than just being a good coach, and he was a fantastic coach. Um, but, uh, he really turned, uh, young boys into young men and taught them respect. You know, the usefulness of hard work and, and, um. I, I just, I think, um, his years of service and what he did for the community over those years. Um, justifies, um, some recognition and, uh, we just thought it would be, uh, a nice, um. Nice way to celebrate his career by naming the baseball field Messina Field.
Thank you, John.
So I, I don't know if the committee has questions about process or, or, you know, I, I would encourage you to, to take a look at the. What was in I Berkers and the Berkshire Eagle, uh, around, um. Coach Messina's lengthy, lengthy career and, um, certainly I'm, I'm at your service to, to answer questions. Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for making this request. You, a district is more than just the buildings. It's the people who go in. And it is, you know, wonderful to talk about, you're putting in reminders as to, you know, how we're getting to where we're getting. This is a wonderful time to be having such conversations. I think we're doing this in a great way. We're putting the information out there for the community to look at and just a nice way to honor. You know, your efforts by, you know, you know, the people in the district. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else before we move on? Okay, John, thank you so much. Thanks for sticking around through this meeting to, to introduce that. And thanks to Coach Paris for being here at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you for considering this too as well.
Oh, thanks, John. Um, just real quickly, wanted you to, to, you'll, you'll probably get the school committee members in, in ten different ways. Uh, between now and when the events actually happen, but we do, you know, it's, um. Uh, when I, when I think about this group of seniors, uh, and think about. Their academic, social and school life, starting as ninth graders four years ago. Man, they, what a, what, what a, what an interesting ride they have had to, to, to reach the graduation stage. Uh, at Mount Greylock on Saturday, June eleven. And, um, there's, it's, it's just been a. You know, ultimately, one of the real pleasures of getting to work in a school and one of the real honors that. That exceed almost everything else is, is getting to know the students that are the school. And, um, I've had the opportunity to get to know quite a few of these seniors. Sometimes through, through really good conversations and sometimes through, uh. Fifteen second interactions as we see each other week after week doing COVID pool testing on, early on Tuesday mornings. But, uh, what a wonderful group of. But uh, what a wonderful group of young people and I can't wait to celebrate them. I think graduation is going to look very much like uh, graduation has looked in years past, pre-COVID um, here at Mount Greylock. And so we just wanted you to see, you know, May thirty-first is their last full day of class. You know, they they are in that enviable position of not really having to make up snow days. So you're welcome, seniors. Uh, Wednesday and Thursday, Jan. first and second are their final exams. June eighth is their class trip. June ninth is class night. We're gonna come back and revisit that uh, in a second here around scheduling the June meeting. Uh, and then Friday, June ten, Friday, June ten is rehearsal. Students get their caps and gowns and their yearbooks, and then there's the family picnic. Uh, and then Saturday, June eleventh at eleven o'clock in the morning is uh, is really the big day, the big day in the life of of a school district. Uh, graduation for our uh, for our Mount Greylock Regional School class of twenty twenty-two. So I just wanted you to have those dates and certainly um, Jake or Colin or myself or Stacy or Nancy McMullin can can fill in any uh, details that you will need about any of that. Uh, and then the memorandum of understanding, and I do apologize to everybody involved, but particularly the three paraprofessionals who are named here, who we really worked a lot on this to try to get this right. Um, we do have a memorandum of understanding. The memorandum is in the packet. Uh, paraprofessionals approached us early in the winter that there was really no hard and fast rule around when we go outside for recess, when we're inside, how we make sure that the kids are safe, how we make sure that the recess monitors, some of whom do two and three recesses a day are safe. And uh, so I'm really, really grateful to Kim Shan from Williamstown Elementary, Alicia Woodbury from Lanesboro Elementary, uh, and Mary Angela Roberts from over at Mount Greylock. And then Cindy and Nolan joined us for for a good number of these meetings. Thank you for for, to all those folks for committing their time and and for getting this right. I do think we got it right. Um, you have the MOU. You now have a month. Look at it and generate any questions or concerns you have, but but we opted to, after surveying all of Berkshire County and looking actually at as many as I could across the state, um, uh, that we kind of want to put into an agreement, a written agreement that will supersede any of us leaving um, to protect this for for future employees and future students that um, we're gonna go by the real field temperature according to AccuWeather.com for Lanesboro and for Williamstown. And if we're below fifteen degrees, we're gonna hold recess indoors. And so you will see this again uh, on on the May agenda for an actual vote. I apologize for completely my fault that we did not put the word vote on the agenda um, as we were setting the agenda. So um, I I own that and I apologize to anybody involved. I am really, really hopeful we have no below fifteen-degree days between now and May twelve. Probably shouldn't have said that out loud because who knows? But this is the practice we've kind of been following all winter. Uh, and with that, I believe my presentation and my time uh, is is finished. And thank you all for your time and patience in covering a lot of ground in a relatively short time. So thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, and next up on the agenda are the um, anticipated open seats for the November twenty two elections. We've discussed this um, as a committee a bunch, but um, it is in the packet. This information that I'm gonna provide is in the packet for the public. Um, we announced this so that people realize that they're they're sort of the schedule of how this works. Um, so in in terms of current members whose terms are expiring in Lanesboro, Christina Connery, my term is, my four-year term is ending. Curtis Elfinbine's four-year term is ending. Ursula Malloy's four-year term is ending, but it's the remainder of her, it's the last two years of the four-year term that um, she came into. Um, in Williamstown, Carolyn Green's four-year term is ending and Steve Miller's four-year term is ending. So um, nomination papers for um, anyone interested in serving um, as a member of the Mount Greylock Regional School District will become available in the clerk's offices in um, Williamstown and Lanesboro Town Halls and at the Mount Greylock Regional District Office. Um, usually those papers arrive um, towards the end of April. And then the school committee elections are held on November eighth. Um, and the candidates appear on the state elections. And um, one thing that's important for people to realize is that people from both, it's sort of unusual in that because we are a regional district, people from both towns vote for people from both Williamstown and Lanesboro. Um, it's the only time that you'll see sort of that cross-section um, in towns. Julia?
Yeah, I I just wanted to make sure I understood um, Ursula's is, she has to run for the last two years of a four-year term, right? Or or hopefully she will, but that that's what's open, the last two years of a four-year term.
Yeah, so the way it it's the it's when the when the regional district was created, they tried to stagger terms so that we weren't getting seven members who had four-year terms. And so some of the terms at the beginning were two-year and some of the four, they were four-year and they were staggered so that there wouldn't be mass exodus after four years. Um, so the the committee member that Ursula came on to, that was a four-year term. Um, but she came in and because we're running into the the next election, it goes back on. Um, but it's a it will
So would it be, would I be running for two more years to finish her term or I would be running for a new four-year term starting this fall?
Cause I don't Joe, maybe can answer that question better.
So um, the when somebody moves off the committee during the middle of their term, at the next, whenever the next election is, that seat that they were sitting in and the term length, the term expiration that they had, that seat then goes up into the election for whatever time is remaining. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, so it's two more years.
Yeah, there were two more.
But
So in Lanesboro.
You could choose to to run for that seat or you could choose to run for a four-year seat. So you're not tied as an individual to any obligation or opportunity.
It sounds like in Lanesboro, there will be one four-year seat, which Curtis is holding now, even though you came in at the very end of it, and one two-year seat. And then in Williamstown, there will be two four-year seats.
In Lanesboro, there's two four-year seats and one two-year seat.
Oh, two and one two-year seat. Yeah, wow. That's a lot of seats open.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Hmm. So, any other questions on that before we move on? Jose?
Uh, does anyone need help with uh, with signatures? Just just let Julia or I know.
I was gonna put everyone on the spot, but I decided that was me.
How many signatures do you need? For an, for a position like this?
I don't remember. Um, when you, when you go to pull the papers, they'll tell you everything you need to know. Okay, so next.
Wanted to say I want to see it was on the order of thirty to fifty signatures. Does that sound about right?
I think so. What I don't remember is if there's a, if you need to have so many from one town and so many for the, from the other town, I I don't remember. You don't think so?
No, there was no
I don't think so. It can be from either town. Either both towns.
But I think you have to have one form for Lanesboro signatures and one form for Williamstown signatures.
Yeah, and then, you know, it's always important to get more signatures because they they have to verify all the signatures.
And also, um, if you're undecided as to which seat you want to run for, you can take out papers for both. You just have to label them at the top, two-year and four-year. And then the town clerk will always tell you who else has submitted papers. So if you're wondering which seats are less competitive than others, just ask the town clerk. You know, which seat is open, you know, doesn't have anybody running for. Not that that really should matter, but um, just saying, um, you'll need a different set of papers. You'll need to get signatures for each if you want to keep your options open.
Thanks, Kenny. Okay, so next up on the agenda is the changing the date of the June school committee meeting. It is currently scheduled for June ninth. There may or may not be a few members on the school committee who have seniors. And there's also a superintendent who might be presenting at said senior class night. So the request is to change the date to the Wednesday prior. So just one day before. So from Ju- Thursday, June ninth to Wednesday, June eighth.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, Julia makes the motion.
Milla second.
Miller seconds. Any discussion? I, you know, in thinking, I I just want to say, in thinking about this, I'm gonna, I'm admittedly a little bit selfish on this particular change date, and I was worried about setting a precedent, but as I look at this committee, which I think is wonderfully made up of parents who in the future may also, you know, run into this situation. I I don't think it's actually a bad precedent to set.
Well, if we also think about this in terms of having your members of the community able to, you know, be watching what's going on.
Right. Exactly. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Owen, I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbine, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. So our June meeting will be Wednesday, June eighth. Okay, upcoming meetings, we have a finance subcommittee meeting April twenty-first at four PM. We have a policy subcommittee meeting April twenty-eighth at five PM, and it's not on the agenda, but our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is May twelfth at six PM. I do not have any other items for discussion and the, any agenda requests. Okay, hearing none, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Though moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Julia, seconds. All in favor?
Bowen, I.
Connery, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbine, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Milla, I.
Thank you. It is eight eleven PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for your time. I hope you have a great evening.
Night.